Is the call meeting in order, please rise for pleasure allegiance. Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome everybody to the November 12 meeting and the November 12 report. First item on the agenda is discussion of the resolution for the fire contract between the vote of Ryback and the town. Heath is going to take a lead from our meeting after we pass the resolution so he can attend the budget workshop or budget public hearing across the street. Heath, go ahead.
All right, so we got a couple of updates here from the previous numbers. I know I emailed out this form and I just passed out another one that's got a few updates to it because the fire department runs their year November 1st to October 31st, so we have the final numbers for the year. A total of 801 calls, which set a department record. It did not change the breakdown of town to village percentages over the last four years, so it remains that the town accounts for 52% of the calls and picks up about 40% of the costs. So, the new part is the second table there, which breaks out the per-call rates for the other districts that also provide coverage to the town or any fire protection districts. And the first column there, the total cost, the one that's in the hundred, hundred thousand plus range, that includes the district as well as the contracted rate that the town pays them to cover a portion of the fire protection districts. Keep in mind that the Ryback Fire Department call number there is exact, as reported. The other two are estimates, the best we have right now, which are, I'm told, on the very high side. So, bottom line is that Rycliffe gets about $187,000 from the town taxpayer and they complete about 150 calls a year for a per-call rate of almost $1,250. Hillside gets reimbursed at a rate of a total of $148,000 and change, $148,000 and change. And they have less than 200 calls, which would make the per-call rate $742 per call. Our current, in the current town budget, we're budgeted for $146,000, well, $146,340. And then I said before, there were 431 calls, which would bring our per-call rate in at $340. What's been presented twice to the town board at their budget hearings is a contracted rate of $187,953, which would be exactly 52% of our projected cost for 2014. So that would increase hours to $436 per call, but that's still well below the compensation that the other districts receive. If we were to use the average, just between Rycliffe and Hillside, we'd be looking at $958 per call would be the going rate. And in that case, we would be asking for almost $413,000, but we're only asking for $187,953. And, you know, it's my feeling that those taxpayers should not continue to subsidize the cost of fire protection for town residents and properties. So I would like to make a motion to establish the contract rate for fire protection to the Ryback Fire Protection District at $187,953 for calendar year 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If we've quantified this, is, do we even have the option of asking for less? I mean, wouldn't that kind of be an unauthorized decision to the town? Rich?
Now that you have these figures, this is what it should be.
Right.
We can't ask our taxpayer to subsidize the town fire.
Okay.
So, they can either repay the contract or they can, if they want to, they can opt the contract with somebody else for coverage.
And the calls for the, for the town probably more expensive than the calls in the village? Was the distance involved and so on?
Yeah, distance is greater, you know, outside the village limits, of course.
You know, a quick percentage of this is rescue squad calls too.
Yeah, which is the most.
And rescue squad, of course, you've got to figure the hour limit on every rescue squad call, you know? And we're not even factoring in any man-hours here, it's a volunteer fire company, you know? So, I mean, they get that one heck of a bang for their buck. Sadly, over the years, none of this was ever monitored, you know? It's only over the last several years since we've all been involved in this picture that we've come to realize exactly what the numbers are. That was the whole idea when Wayne got on the board, was to, I asked him to work with the fire company and get a breakdown of town and village responses, so we knew where it was starting.
Now, the breakdown with the emergency calls is the same as the fire calls?
All, and the calls that I gave were all included. I'm told that it's...
It's the same ratio for the ambulance calls, is that the same ratio?
It's figured on, it's figured on total call lines, it's not, it's not broken down into items by whether it's a rescue squad call or a fire call. The number that you got here is 431 calls in the town and that combines fire calls and...
No, I'm just anticipating questions.
Yeah, I'm told that 500, about 500 of the total calls.
You know, the bottom line here is that this is what the money we need in order to cover the operating costs.
The total, last year, how do those 801, 510 are EMS calls? And how do those 247 go to the town? So about half of the EMS calls go to the town. And they take, if you look at the fire calls, it would be 141 for the town and 95 for the village. So, and then there's motor vehicles are broken out as well. And that would, that would all be part of the regular department report that would come later and have all that.
Now Heath, just so I'm clear, you said under the 2013 figures that are updated, you said the year was from when?
Year, the fire department year goes from November 1st to October 31st.
Okay.
And they do that for, for training reasons, so that they can have all their numbers in line for the elections of officers and such, which takes place next month.
And these numbers represent that time span?
Correct.
Good. So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Just one quick question, these ratios, 52%, 48%, was that consistent for four years?
Well, I just figured it out here, it is pretty consistent, as a matter of fact, some is higher, except for 2012, it was 48%. 2010 was 52%, 2011 53%, as I said, 2012 48%, and 2013 53%.
It's actually higher in the past year, the number that I used was the entire four year history to come up with the 52% average over four years. So that's, you know, over, you're looking at a sample of 3,086 calls that were, that were divided to come up with that 52%.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Thanks Heath.
All right. So I'll skew myself and head across the street.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Keith, do you have a call report from the month of October?
I do. I have a whole, a bunch of stuff to report on.
Do you? All right, I'll see you when you get back.
Anybody.
Okay. Hi Jack.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
We started a little early tonight.
Yeah, I thought I'd be attending.
Had to go across the, he has to go across the hallway. Okay, next item on the agenda, Joel Tyner is not going to be here this evening because he is attending the Clinton Town Board meeting. As everybody's aware, there's a proposal for a power line expansion through our area in Highland and Clinton, so a lot of meetings about that, so Joel's attending that tonight. He didn't notify us he was there. Waste water department, Brent?
For October, we had 3.5 million gallons of wastewater treated, 37,455 gallons of sludge processed, 4,713 pounds of sludge processed. Fairly quiet month, however, the new sludge press, the variable frequency drive one kaput and it's under warranty and it's been replaced and is functioning, knock on wood. So we'll keep an eye on that to make sure that it's not a continuing problem. I think you're all in possession of a letter from Anthony Gaspring recommending that we make an appointment for William Maniero. And he's been, successfully completed his 90-day probationary period and has done well, so we're recommending that probation status be changed to permanent full-time. He's a grade 2A certified wastewater operator and we want to get him up to a 3A. In order to do that, he requires one year of on-the-job employment and completion of his certification work that he started. So, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint William Maniero to full-time, permanent full-time status in the wastewater system.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question?
Yeah, just wanted to ask a question. So he has a year to get his 3A?
Yeah.
And what happens if, I'm being devil's advocate here, what happens if he doesn't...
Guys keep trying, I guess.
Keep, keep trying?
Yeah, he's still valuable employee.
But he was hired as a 2A, right?
Yeah, with the knowledge that he's going to move forward and become a 3A.
So if he doesn't pass his 3A, he's still...
He can still work the facility, doing, functioning the same way.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. So Brent, after he, just so I'm clear, this stuff that he has to do through Morrisville, he has to get the year in before he can go do that? He has to do this in order to...
No, it goes to the same time. He started the Morrisville program.
Okay. Because it says something about one week supervisory management course being offered in February, so is he going to be going for a week in February to attend this?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to pass a resolution for, for that at some point, right?
I mean, if it's like just a nominal fee, then I'll just, it's under $500, I'll just approve it.
Imagine, he's, he's going to be up there for a week, there's going to be room and meals and...
Yeah, yeah, that'll come up later.
Okay.
To show everybody. Drive back and forth, I don't know where Morrisville is.
Uh... I understand.
Couple, two or three hours.
Yeah, I'll take him drive back and forth.
How far is it from Chicago?
It's on the way.
State, your family's house.
It's on the way to Chicago.
Okay, thanks. Anything else on wastewater?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, water report, Hines?
Yeah, we treated in October 15,266,000 gallons. Installed a new turbidity monitoring equipment that we had aboard and installed and wired it. I want to give an update on the squirrel infestation that we had, we removed the trees. And now I'm looking at getting the insulation replaced. And one of the things that I see is we have compensation in other places in where the squirrels were coming down. So, I'd like to talk to our village engineer to get her idea of what is the best way to insulate this, whether we should use fiberglass, which is what we have now, or low insulation inside, or use, you know, some other type of, some of that type of insulation. Probably it would be about an hour or so that I need her to, just to talk to her. I have scheduled three people to look at this and some will be tomorrow and Thursday and then Friday.
So three people that are looking at it, what are they looking at for?
Well, that's why I wanted to get the engineer to just have a, ask a question to come down with it and look at it.
Who are they? The three people that are looking at it, who are they looking for?
They're going to be looking at replacing the insulation and putting new insulation in there.
Okay, but we haven't talked to the engineer yet.
I haven't talked to the engineer and I want to just tell the board that I'm going to ask her, first of all, I want to come over and take a look at it. I see you guys in the afternoon.
Do we need to do that before we talk to these other people?
No, I don't think so, because...
Do we need to use fiberglass or foam?
Yeah, well, I want to see the engineer first and then I see the people who install it and ask them to, to buy their fiberglass or foam, whatever, whatever it is.
Oh, so in other words contractors aren't material specific?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right, okay.
They can do any, any kind of thing.
All right.
It's just a question that I have in my mind, is the, the kind of airflow under the metal roof, and I want to make sure that we do the right thing there. Water distribution system, we flushed hydrants, older hydrants or most of the hydrants in the town and the village and in Rycliffe. We replaced the fire hydrant at Beach Street and Chestnut Street. We replaced the fire hydrant at 10 Blood Avenue. We installed a new six-inch valve on Montgomery Street and Blood Avenue and replaced the four-inch valve on Blood Avenue and Montgomery Street. So in total, this year or this season, actually, starting from last September to today, we replaced a total of 11, 11 old fire hydrants. We also replaced 14 old ancient non-operational shuttle valves and deactivated six unnecessary valves and removed some of them in the past calendar year. I started to work, I started to work on evaluating the distribution system and I sent each of you a, the beginning of my work here to take a look, to correlate hydrant flow rates with the conditions of the pipes in the ground. And what I have found is is a fairly good correlation. And we also found, after talking to some people in the fire department, what flow rates should be. And in some instances, we have here, at least in six, six areas out of the 13 that I looked at, we have subpar flow rates in the pipes, in the hydrant. The areas are Chestnut, Brixton, Bill Street, and Mill Road.
Who knows? 2T, not 2Z.
Oh, I thought it was 2Z. Oh, wow, thank you. So...
I thought, I thought one was a typo, whether it was...
No, 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 I thought, I thought when I looked at it, I thought it was P-L-A-A-T. So, okay. Yeah, so, of course, the, the hydrants that I selected, the areas that I selected were, I had a sense that there were problems in these areas, so that's why I selected them for first and just as, you know, to get some kind of a sense of what good hydrants look like, we did also some on South Parsonage and on Beach and Chestnut Streets, where we knew there were fairly new and big-sized pipes and they had fairly good flow. So I'm doing this work really to set up, to get an idea of what the whole distribution systems in the village looks like. A lot of it is over 100 years old and I think at some point, and probably soon, we have to start replacing in some areas there. And if you take a look at the pictures that I have showing you here, they look pretty, pretty bad. And they were, and it's not just only the four-inch pipes, but also the six-inch pipes. And particularly the six-inch pipes, I sampled in two places, one from South Street and one from the Blood Avenue. And both of them are really, really badly tuberculated. And the four-inch pipes are even worse, of course, because they're, they're older and, yeah. So I want to just lay these out to you, so, because at some point we have to, to make a decision what we want to do with these. Are there any questions on that?
Is there any, any chance that some of these could be slower? Are there any valve issues?
Yeah, well, I, I think I told you a couple of months ago that as I were, as we were, I say aye, I'm going to take a personal, I should, the water department.
Well, wait, I don't mean sort of fails, I mean like with regard to some of these readings, would they be lower because the valve on the hydrant is partially...
No, 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 no.
It can't be...
That is, that is not an issue.
It's an issue.
It's an issue of, of the amount of cross-section in the pipe and the distance from the main and the size of the, certainly the size of the pipe. But I had, I think I told you about a couple of months ago, as I, as I was going through the replacement of fire hydrants and we saw what happens in the mines and then we tried to, wanted to replace fire hydrants, we couldn't because we had valves, water valves that were in bad shape. So some of the emphasis shifted, some of the emphasis to replace the water valves. Now we had done with that for, for this year, but in the spring and the areas where we're going to look at is in South Street and 308, 308 East Market Street, that where the mobile stations, that whole complex there is, is, the valves are in pretty bad shape, some of them don't work, can open or close them, and so we have to, we're going to do work on that.
We need to replace some valves just to ease it there this year, right?
Yeah, we replaced a valve, I would say about maybe a quarter of a mile east of the, the, the mobile station.
So you think just before you had your drive, right? Probably, probably about 100 yards?
Yeah, that's the one, that particular valve, well, yeah, that particular valve was actually feeding ice though. And we couldn't shut it off, we wanted to replace the hydrant and had to spend two days after we couldn't shut off the valve, we couldn't shut off the valve there, we couldn't shut it off on East Market Street as well, and we had to go all the way down to, to South Parsonage Street to shut the valve, so. To get control of our distribution system, that is one of the first things we have to do, is replace the water valves. I want to talk about some, some other items that I have. The first thing I want to talk about is I'd like, we had in, a few months ago, I think it was probably in April or May, approved transfer of some of the water department fund balance to the Ull Cleanout, additional hydrants and valves that we wanted to install and the funding for the distribution system. And we haven't done that yet and I just want to remind the board that we really, that I really like to do that, to put that money aside. And I ask Lisa here to, to do that as early as possible.
So we already did approve it?
We have approved this, we have approved, it just hasn't been done.
There are two people talking, so I'm going to vote you.
You approved it, we hadn't done it yet because we were trying to get all end-of-year stuff done before we transferred any money anywhere, which we can do now, so.
Okay, but the other question I have is I, I have seen expenditure report, but I have not seen any income reports, so I don't, I guess I can give a daily fund balance, but I really like to know what our income is versus what we apply. One other thing is, I, I had a number of issues with, with consumers, water, water consumers about the, the amount of water that they're using and so we, I resolved all of them so far. But one of the things I would like to have is to get another license for a utility software that Pat has in her computer and I want to have that software, which is, it's not a building or someone, it's just a utility where you take data from the meters on the, on the daily or quarter of the hour, to see what flows going through there over a 30, 30 day, nine-to-day period. I don't know what it's going to cost, but I think it is, it's a hundred thousand dollars when looking at the operations, high stakes, so a hundred, no, no, under a thousand, under, under.
I thought you said a hundred thousand.
No, 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 a hundred thousand.
That's one way to get it.
So I want to, I want to, so I want to, so I just, I just want to tell you that I, that I, that's what I want to do. The other, the, the second item is I need to get a computer, a newer computer for the water department, for Tom, and to get a monitor so we can do some of the work that needs to be done down there and have an extra computer for it for the water. One of the things I've been doing is I'm, I'm asking Pat to tell me those census meters that are near the turnover point, you see they have a lot of problems when the census meter is turned from the 999,000 gallons to a million. And so I asked her, these are the old meters, these are not the brand new meters that I radio pets and so on. And I want, ask her to give me a list of them during the winter, I want Tom and the water boys to, to make an effort to change a lot of these that are turned over. I also know I'm 20 years old and so that's one other thing I need to, to face the old census meters, I mean, they've all started since years ago and we've got about 600, but we still got about 500 or so of these old census meters within there. So, power reduction initiative, I sent you all a copy of a printout that I made from Manina Electric. In October, we generated 2 million kilowatt hours and, yeah, 2 million kilowatt hours consumed about 298 and we saved about, based on that, about $333. Called to Central Hudson and to find out, we asked him to change all the high-pressure mercury vapor lamps to sodium, high-pressure sodium lamps. And they told me it's about 60% ton, which is kind of slow, I thought it would be done by now, but he, he had been marked, showed me that this is going to be done in the next month or so. Okay, and I think that's all we have to get to session for this.
Okay, thanks Hines. Fire department when Heath comes back, street department, Howie.
Okay, I hope you noticed that the exterior of this firehouse was pressure washed by the street department employees.
Yeah, I got wet.
You got wet? Our new Bobcat skid steer was delivered and they used it to clean the parking lot across the street here and also the street in front of the firehouse and it did a very good job. Mike is requesting a truck and a trailer to move the Bobcat from job to job. Talk about that in a minute. He says a one-ton dump truck would be perfect, this truck would be the replacement for the pickup truck that we plow and tow with. Leaf back has been repaired and is working well, leaf pickup is going well, a lot of leaves are mixed in with brush, which means loaders and the dump trucks have to be used. Please, he wants the citizens to try to keep the brush away from the leaves, in case they are using a leaf truck, which sucks up the leaves. We had to do some repairs on both back hose. South Parsonage was striped from the blinking light to North Park Road and a crosswalk was painted across South Parsonage Street at the intersection of North Park. And Mike reports the rest is leaves, leaves and more leaves. So, Mike gave us three quotes here for a trailer for the skid steer. And this could be towed with, with the equipment that we have at the, at the village garage, one of the trucks has a ball hook-up on it. You guys have a ball? Two of them are 18 feet long, the one is 16 feet long.
Seems to be a new question, Rich. Well, 16 is the lowest, right?
Right, that's the lowest one.
So we're not, we're not comparing apples to apples here. You got a 10,400 pound payload, you got a 13,800 pound payload and you got a 7,000 pound, so you got three of the trailer capacity wise.
How much is the skid steer?
You're going to get the difference in price. So you're going to get the difference in price.
Well, these two are thirteen thousand, eighteen footers.
Which one do you got looking at?
Well, Hudson River.
Trailer King?
The trailer, yeah.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred pounds here. And this is six ton.
Says it right out.
Six ton back over thirteen thousand eight hundred pounds.
You have a different one, even though it is Trailer King?
No, it's the same, six ton.
Oh, it says thirteen thousand eight hundred.
This needs more research.
Okay.
Do we get away with that sixteen footer?
Yeah. That's quite a haul though. It's probably only intentional trailers that, what happens is when you get into those heavy trailers, they tend to be more, they're in maxes, etc.
Do you call this a pickup truck?
He says one of the dump trucks he uses out there.
So we're always getting that, I guess we always have a dump truck.
Yeah, we have three, four. So we'll table this till next month?
These, two of these quotes I just got when I got here tonight.
I know, they just came in today.
I wasn't prepared really that, I don't know.
Okay, we'll talk about that next month and one other thing I want to talk about was I had Tom Maddox look at the, the bridge down there by the Legion Park. Because we want to, we want to fix the railings that have been washed away. They were washed away by Hurricane Irene a couple of years ago. And you guys all got this too, right? Okay. The main thing he says is the bridge superstructure is in good alignment and in good condition for its age. Appears in the stream appear to be sound. So, and we're talking about the walkway that goes across Route Nine, not the bridge, not Route Nine. Across the stream near Route Nine, not Route Nine Bridge itself, but the walkway, the pedestrian walkway. So he has some ideas here.
Did you talk to Mike, did you see if Mike's done any work?
No, Mike didn't do that work, the state did that work.
All the questions Tom had.
Yeah.
Okay. We need to go to the, we need to send a letter to the state, state in our case.
Okay. State did some drainage work and the water diverts down to the side and it might be causing...
Pipes to come out.
Yeah.
Dump some water right down there to go to the back, that's causing the bridge problem.
That was the...
The pedestrian walkway problem.
That was the easy way to do it. Okay, we'll talk to the state. That's it for me, for the, any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
We talked about striping before on South Parsonage.
Right.
And it seems to me that we did the borders of the asphalt. And do you think that, what does everyone feel about having or think about having a shoulder there? If we could just do a white shoulder, because this South Parsonage is about the same width as, as Norwood and we have...
You're talking about the rest that won't be paved?
Yeah. Just so people feel like a little...
What I think about it is, is we're going to paint that one, why aren't we going to paint every village street?
Well, because these are wide and you're semi-arterials, just like Norwood has the shoulder.
Some aren't a lot, aren't a lot of other streets.
I don't think there's a lot of those.
Mulberry Street's a big arterial through the village street, everybody uses that as a get-around.
What do you, what do you mean by shoulder?
He wants us to paint the area on the shoulders of the road.
Whatever you, just like we have in Norwood, whatever the remaining width would be if you take the standard lane width.
On one side, there is a sidewalk, so that's considered a shoulder also?
Well, that's not a continuous sidewalk, that's...
Yeah, they have to...
We paint, we painted it the same way it was painted before. Now what Brad's asking is to put new striping, which wasn't there previously, the rest of South Parsonage Street.
Oh, all the way down?
Yeah.
To, at least to Norwood, just so it's, you know, kind of a walk to school kind of thing.
Yeah, the primary routes to school and if we're not going to actively address the sidewalk deficiencies, then in the meantime, you know, it may provide an increased safety barrier for children.
What I would suggest is if we want kids walking on the edges of the road, I would much rather they didn't walk on South Parsonage. I'd rather have them cut North Park to Arnett Road and go down Arnett Road, there's a heck of a lot less traffic on Arnett Road. And we're talking about going to Chatsworth Livingston.
I think that's what they do now. I don't see a lot of kids walking on it.
Just people who walk.
Kids are...
There's a reason why a lot of people don't walk.
Okay, now we're talking about Heinz, not with kids.
Well, we don't want Heinz to run over either.
You, you walk on South Parsonage, should you go on Arnett?
I never go on that.
You don't like Arnett?
No, because my wife doesn't like to go on that.
You like more, you like more activity, cars will fly.
We can't be striping roads based upon what village trustees and their wives think.
I think there's more...
But I do see a lot of kids...
Yeah, I don't think it's scarce to see.
And without, without a safe route, it's a deterrent, I know. We, my family doesn't walk that road because it's not safe, that's why.
Like I said, if I was walking it, I'd take Arnett Road, I wouldn't walk South Parsonage Street.
But if the sidewalk was continuous, South Parsonage, you would walk it?
If there was a sidewalk, certainly.
There is partly a sidewalk, yeah.
So there's not as much feeling to walk, you guys do?
I just, I don't like the thought, to me then it's just going to encourage more, more pedestrian traffic on South Parsonage Street, which I would rather not see.
Oh, right.
I would rather see, I'd rather see people walking on Arnett Road. It's safer, much less traffic on that road.
I agree with you. If you put the stripe there, then more people are going to walk on it. It's a busier road.
South Parsonage Street, as I say, it's a, it's a shortcut. People come up Route Nine and then they can come in behind Hobson's, you know, up that way and then they can take South Parsonage Street to get to the village, as opposed to having to come up Route Nine and get to the traffic light. So a lot of volume and traffic goes up that way. Same thing, people coming down from the north, turn by the fairgrounds and they come down Mulberry Street to shoot around, so that they don't have to hit the traffic light. It makes more sense to me to have people using alternate, alternate streets or pedestrians on.
You're not being directed on Arnett though? It's...
We can, if you want, you can make a motion and we can put it to a vote.
If you don't make a motion, we stripe a shoulder on both sides of South Parsonage.
Second. And give, give the start and the finish. So that's clear, where we're going.
From, from North Park to Norwood?
And you second it. Heinz seconded it.
Wait, how about North Park to Mill?
That's how you want it. Yeah? You're second, I second. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to know about, is there enough room there?
Yeah.
Well, provided there's enough room for standard lane width.
For two cars, for two-way streets.
I, I walked it off, it's almost the same width as North Park. That will be a provision, that'll be a condition. Whatever standard lane width is plus whatever's left over. If it's six inches, it's not. If there's a comfortable twenty-four inch walking line, we would do something like that. You have to measure it up.
And we can get one lane out on one side?
That's true.
Skew it to one side?
Well, we can't change a crown, we don't want to change the crown of the road. Right?
Are we okay? That's how we're going to propose it? Motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Both passes three to two. Okay.
Now, I have one more thing, it's a small thing and I suppose we'll second some. We had, a couple of weeks ago, we wanted to have some signs put up, one where he faces and one on Stottini Drive, Joe.
I think Mike's got the signs and he and I got to go do the mark out. I think he told me last Thursday or Friday he got the signs.
I just have a question, clarification on the bridge. You know, you put a, there was a proposal in the letter to, to construct a plan.
Yeah, well now we're going to talk to the state, maybe we should...
Tom, Tom's belief is that the state has caused this problem and that we shouldn't really be doing anything. Whether we can get the state to agree to that, that's another thing. That's his belief, is that this, this drain, where those pipes come out of the back, they put those drains in there, some type of underdrain, right? And that's what's causing the problem. And he says if we didn't put the drainage in, and it's not, it shouldn't be our responsibility to correct the problem they created.
Storm drains from Route Nine.
Right. So who's going to interface with the state?
I'm going to have to reach out to DOT.
Okay.
Tom says he's willing to draft a letter if I want, so I'm going to sit down with him and find out how the letter should be ordered.
So your question is, I know he has a price in there to further develop a plan, but we should do that to see what the state after, what the state should do?
We should approach the state first.
You know, I approached the state initially and, you know, they said it's not their responsibility, so I was just wondering whether that step was, so we should have that answer relative.
I just want to make a statement about the water, the water line that goes there. When, when we looked at it, Howie and I and Mike, it seems to me that water line is really deep down and for us to repair this water line would cause a lot of grief in terms of the footings and between the bridge and the walkbridge and Route Nine. And also, if we ever get to do any work there, the four-inch line is probably not big enough and it's also in bad shape most likely from what I have seen on one upstream. So if we ever going to do something there, I think we need to do, as we did in South Parsonage Street, have the water line insulated and elevated.
Well, that has nothing...
That has nothing to do with it.
The national part though, right?
No, 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 but I, I just had made a point before that I'd like to be included in discussions. I think this is going to be much, much different kind of job.
My question is, if we're going, there's going to be a repair done on a pedestrian bridge, that the water line is not in that vicinity, is that affected correctly?
Yes, yes, it is in very close proximity and mainly because the opening, or the opening between the walkbridge...
Is it effective?
Let me finish please, okay? It is between the bridge and the walkbridge and Route Nine, there is about a three-foot area. And in that three-foot area, the water line goes. And so if we ever were to dig out this, or I wanted to dig out it, we would actually get into, into the footings of most of the bridge.
See, my question, my question is, because I haven't looked at it, what I'm trying to determine is where there's railing, which is what we're concerned about fixing, is the railing on the pedestrian bridge. Are we going to be doing any work in the area of that water pipe?
No, no, because I, I think, I think the work is being, being done on the east side of the bridge, right, on the upstream side.
The water pipe is actually in the water.
And the, and the water pipe is actually...
Okay, so it's two separate map, yeah, okay. All right, I just want to be clear, because if I'm going to go to the state, I want to have a good understanding of the dynamics that are there.
It's the same thing we had with the, with the water pipe over here by South Parsonage Bridge, where the water line was in the stream.
The stream, yeah. But it's so deep, it is so deep in the stream.
You even know if the pedestrian bridge repair was going to affect it?
Yeah, this is a whole other project.
Is that it for streets?
Yeah, that's it, unless anybody has more questions.
Easier up.
Okay. For the fire department, we'll start with the call report, call report for the month of October. EMS calls were twenty-five in the town, thirteen in the village, total of thirty-eight. Fire calls were ten in the town, five in the village, for a total of fifteen. Three motor vehicle accidents in the town. And I'll give you the, well, the total calls for the month were fifty-six. And the overall total calls, I'm going to give you the fire department year goes from November first to October thirty-first, so I'm going to give you their, their annual report. There were a total of four hundred and thirty-one calls to the town and three hundred and seventy to the village, for a total of eight hundred and one. That being a record year for the department. They're going to start tracking all mutual aid calls. They have tracked, over the past year, they, they tracked only Rancliff, which had only one in October and for the year they had seventeen calls there. So in the future, they're going to break out Hillside in addition to Rancliff and then an other group that would account, would account for any other mutual aid calls outside of the district. Couple of things that I want to mention is, you know, over the course of the year, they have some people that are regular responders, so I thought I'd mention the top five responding people. And we had Bill Vickery with six hundred and fifty-one out of, out of those eight hundred and one calls, Tony Bo at three eighty-eight, Johnny Prado at three eighty-four, and Leah and Trout at two hundred. So we wanted to thank them and all the other volunteers for the, for the year. In terms of membership, they appointed four new firefighters since our last meeting. All probationary status, those being Clayton Funk, Ryan Simarelli, Michael Kugel and Joe Cotta. So I'd like to make a motion to approve their membership in the fire department.
You second?
I think I got one more, yeah. I've got four.
Yeah, I got...
I mentioned four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that Clayton Funk, Ryan Simarelli?
Yeah.
And Michael Cotta and Joe Cotta. You got the second, right?
Yes.
You got that one? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So what are...
How did it go?
Have we finished the membership report?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So they have a total, I know we asked last time, you know, we, we know who comes, but we never know who goes. So they have a total of a hundred and eleven members, which includes life members, which can or cannot be active firefighters. On their roster, they have fifty-five active firefighters, which also includes EMS responders. And of those, there are about thirty that are, make up the core group of firefighters that respond to regularly to calls. And I have something to address with that later.
So we said, I suppose, fire department score is just a normal number?
From what I understand, they're, they're doing fairly well right now in terms of numbers. But on that note, a recruitment statement, any Monday night, I believe it's at six o'clock is when they have their training session here, so anyone that may be interested in joining the fire department in firefighter status, fire police status, or emergency medical responder, EMT status, just stop in and talk to anyone down there on a Monday night.
Okay. We sent ID to favor. We've asked multiple times when they send a call report, they would courtesy copy us and the message is not going through.
Okay. I do have a copy for you, on the whole report.
If you could just have them add us to the email.
Oh, one, one last thing. They did have their nominations on Friday night for the line officers and also for the officers of, of Rancliff Fire Incorporated. And then they'll vote next month and then we'll announce and, you know, approve their, you know, no real surprises in the nominations, but we'll wait until those finalists over there and announce it first, announce it next month.
All right. What else you got?
I do have a question on what's the status of the car two out there?
Howie?
Well, now today I heard something else that if Mike Wolf is requesting if we can, if we can get the motor from the truck out here at the highway department, supposedly it'll fit in there, then maybe the highway department can use that as...
It's for all of us, we talked about this earlier. And we're going to find out for a fact that the motor will go from one to the other, that transmission will hook up, that everything else will hook up, and who's going to do this work? Because we're not going to spend money on it.
Mike says the highway department can do it if, if, if it works, if it fits, he's going to go to Ruby's and find out if, if it'll work. Because they need a car to go around it.
I talked to Mike when I talked to him about the trailer.
I do have an offer on the table of fifty dollars, if that's... Not for me, I just, I've heard that.
Yeah, I know.
You want to go out tomorrow?
What's the purpose of it, because the highway department's going to have it?
Just so they can have a small vehicle to, you know, when they got to run to Weeble Lumber or down the air for something, instead of using a big truck.
Tell the skid steer.
Yeah, maybe they quit the skid steer. It's more when driving.
I believe so.
Okay. That's it, Heath?
No, no, I don't know what's happened, though.
I was talking about fire department operations. That's it for operations?
Correct.
Okay, so, so just not having me out across the street.
They had a few questions, um, but they just kinda, kinda sat on it, so they know, you know, they did not agree to the contract terms or ignored a disagreement to that.
Okay, so how is it left with us, they're gonna follow us and let us help?
Yes.
Okay. This was that, this isn't their, uh, public hearing?
This was their public hearing, yeah.
It has to be, I mean, unless they're supposed to have to be, yeah, leading the year.
Well, they have their public hearing tonight, so based on their public hearing, they can choose if they want to vote their logic tonight, just to that.
They did allude to the fact that it's not due until December thirty-first. But, um, I would assume it's not over.
All right. That's it for fire?
Yes.
Streets are done, my name's Tony. Uh, I'm sure everybody's aware, our new zoning enforcement officer began work last week. Uh, is everybody ready?
I'm in the yes of the head.
Was that right?
Not yet, no.
No. Uh, his plan is to be here on Mondays and on Thursdays. That would be his regularly scheduled hours, and, uh, he was at, at town hall last Thursday night, he did have the, uh, zoning board of appeals meeting regarding forty-seven West Market Street, and he did attend just so that he could familiarize himself with what's going on there. And in order, as to, as a report for that, uh, basically the planning board, uh, conducted a fact finding mission to find out what's going on at forty-seven West Market, what happened when the county was there, uh, what's happened, that happened since the county has left. They asked several questions, Jeff Martin, the property owner's attorney, had been basically, uh, presented, I guess what you would call some type of a defense. Called up the people that are involved with the county, called people that are involved with Occupations Inc., Hudson Valley Mental Hygiene, or Hudson Valley Mental Health, uh, and, uh, the third one, the Lexington Center for Recovery. And they interviewed all of these people that run these programs to get a feel for what the programs were about, uh, services they provide, uh.
And the hearing is still open, so.
Basis is a clientele, so, uh, the, the public hearing was, is going to be continued, uh, the, uh, zoning board basically has to digest all this information that they were, they were given and talking with Rich, uh, November twenty-first, correct?
It's on, it's on the twenty-first, which is the next one, I think.
November twenty-first is when it's gonna come back to the zoning board. So that's where we are with that. Northern Dutch's Hospital, uh, public hearing for that, next Tuesday? So that one's coming up. Uh, we did receive a letter, and let's go talk about it on the plan for zoning, we did receive a letter, I have a correspondence from Dutch County Fairgrounds. As everybody's aware, we have been going through for the last two years, uh, zoning rewrite, uh, for the fairgrounds and creating a fairground district. And we've also been proposing an events code. And, uh, and we've been through two public hearings. Public workshops, I should say, not public hearings. And I've come to the point where, uh, you know, we basically feel we have some documents that we can work with. Uh, Andy Embrady sent me a letter which I received last week, and they said that, you know, they are, uh, happy and content with the documents that are in place, and they would like to move forward. I know, Brand, you said you needed to talk to, uh, John Worth a little about the events code, have you had it?
No, I haven't been able to get a hold of him yet, I'm sure he was busy with the election season.
All right, you wanna follow up with him, you wanna be?
I am, yeah, but I think you should call him also.
Okay. All right, and then, in speaking with Rich, of course, in order to, for us to, we, in other words, the idea here is to get, try and get this to public hearing, but before we can do that, we have to have the documents in final form, and before we can schedule a public hearing, we also have to have the, uh, EAF and the secret done, in order to create a, the public approval. So I did call Andy again this morning and said, uh, Andy, just so you're aware, this is where we have to go in order to get this to a public hearing point, so he's aware of it. Uh, so the idea here is we'll try and get the job and get the events code finalized, uh, and then we can certainly get those documents out so the public can review it, and, uh.
As far as, as far as the zoning district is concerned, I think you and I are comfortable with a draft, but these guys haven't seen it. So we need to get that, all right, we, we need to have both documents finalized and get that out to everybody. Yeah, make sure you're okay with it before.
Well, what about, like, I wanna make some comments on the events code, mind what I do there?
At the public, well, certainly, certainly you can review it and make some comments.
What'd you say?
You should do it now, I mean, uh, now.
I'll email you guys, let you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, in addition to what you have made at the public workshops you've had, you have more comments?
Right.
Okay, then, yeah, you should get that.
Mm-hmm.
Out there.
Yeah.
Because if there's gonna be any significant changes, then we gotta go back to the table again.
Okay, I'll let you know.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, what exactly did they say about their contributions to the events code, does it?
Uh, they says we declined to comment on the events code language and ask that the village board schedule public hearings on both proposal or was it the earliest opportunity?
Okay, I'm not sure what that means.
They don't feel the need to make any changes to the events code.
Let's see, maybe.
Okay. All right, that's it for planning and zoning, if anybody has any questions. Police and court, everybody got the incident reports and particular reports, correct? Uh, as far as the police contract of the town, uh, we had made one minor change to the contract. An avenue dark reimbursement for the IRS mileage, and we wanted to make sure that the town understood that. The IRS reimbursement before whatever the federal guideline is at the time of the service, meaning that if a change is going in the course of the year, then we have the authority to change it. So, did we get that, if it can find it? So, uh, that'll be a matter of being presented to, um, the town for signature and my signature. We would have to approve the contract if we were first, though, correct?
Yes.
So, we need to get a copy of that. Can you cut next door? Okay, and, uh, we have a, a request from Tricia. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She needs petty cash, simply because, uh, of the change that we made downstairs for cash transactions, she needs to be able to have some cash. We don't sell any garbage tags and stuff anymore. I'll make a motion to approve that we establish for the, I'll pay cash drawer for court. Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only, then the only two people that have access to the safe, that's, that's just you and Pat, right?
That's it, that's it, yeah, but she had hers, uh, in her.
She has a safe, she has a safe in there?
All of her cabinets are locked.
Yeah, but.
Well, we can put it in the safe downstairs. But she has court, she needs it, she needs it for court when she's here, and she has no change, so she's not paying the fines.
But she can place this, and how much she keep safe?
How do you say it, it's replenished?
She has lots of cabinets.
That she can put it in.
She's a lot.
And to replenish it, then how does?
It's never, it, she never, it's, it's not, uh, it's just a cash drawer, so somebody gives her twenty, and she needs, they only need to give her ten, she makes the change. So it's not like money is ever going out, so always gonna be.
She's not purchasing anything.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
It's just a change drawer, that's it.
It's fifty dollars a lock.
That's what she asked for?
Yeah.
Okay, you gotta trust her, unless you wanna start tall.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, since, since, uh, knocking on wood, I'll go to court.
Keep your apple round when you want.
I would have actually been more, she know what she's asking for.
All right, so we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Don't worry, boy, you got them.
Yeah.
Yeah? Oh, here it is. One of these piece of paper.
For September.
Okay, nine fifteen thirteen, client from a concerned citizen, took him to eighty-six East Market Street, a pit bull was seen in that yard, and people wanted to know more about it. Was it licensed, inoculated, and being controlled responsibly in an area where it could pose a lot of problems? It did not perform to the way I spoke with. She was caring for it for her sister, she didn't think it was licensed because her sister hasn't been there very long. She was.
Sure.
Sure, sure the dog had been.
Inoculated.
Inoculated, the dog is never outside alone, and they gave her a warning to get it done, and soon, in fact, it was not licensed already. I'm still checking on the sister, hadn't been there yet. That's it for that. Committee reports, trees housed.
Okay, we had a very successful tree planting on November second. Um, we planted twenty-two trees and had more than twenty volunteers. I'd also like to know, we had five volunteers from Daytop, and they always pitch in, um, the strongest guys there, we really need them, I'd like to thank Daytop for that. Uh, the spring tree planting is scheduled for April twenty-sixth, and I'll be reminding you when, as that comes on. Um, what else, I'd like to thank Tom Johnson, the highway department employee who dug the holes for us, did a good job.
I'm confused.
What?
Apparently the, the highway department guys were confused and not confused, since three holes were not dug, but that may be because the signs confused the highway department, and who brought? Who thought one sign indicated that only one tree was to be placed there? Next year, we could wait to place the signs until after.
Yeah, that does confuse.
If they were confused about one sign, three years, if, if there's no sign, what's gonna happen?
Okay, what happened was, I don't, we didn't have signs in every place, but we had a list for Tom to go off of, say, fifty-seven Chestnut number. There was only one sign yet, but it was a spot for two holes, so he only dug the one hole, he did the right thing, the tree commission has to.
I don't, I guess the tree, uh, highway department.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's why I didn't mention it. I'm not blaming it anymore.
Now they're saying next year, we'll place the signs after the plant, that means no trees, no holes are gonna be dug.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll mention that at our next meeting.
Right?
Yeah.
Am I reading it right?
Yeah, you're reading it, yeah.
Okay.
No, I, you know what, you know what they mean?
I was really confused by it.
We don't have enough signs.
It doesn't take a lot of confusion to know that.
We don't have enough signs to, for all the holes.
They're talking about the signs they put up afterwards, and they realize that it was planted by the tree.
So, yeah, what they wanna do is put up the signs after it's been planted, leave up the sign for a couple of weeks, saying this tree was planted by the tree commission.
I'm not confused anymore now.
No, yours is completely straight now.
But I still don't understand what's gonna happen next year.
Next year, we're gonna have Tom, we're gonna have the address, and we're gonna say one or two trees at, at the specific address, and we're gonna put little flags where the holes go. We didn't wanna write all.
Your honor?
Yeah, we didn't wanna write another two pages of stuff on here.
All right, and here we have, it says one problem was the unhappiness of the vics to have the trees moved from between the sidewalk and the lawn, to the inside of the lawn?
Yeah.
I don't get it, you got the sidewalk and you got the lawn.
Right.
And then on the inside of the lawn?
Yeah, the original flags were put up in between the road and the sidewalk.
Oh, so then this is, is wrong, and it says the sidewalk and the lawn, should be saying sidewalk and the road, right?
Right, right, right.
Right. Okay.
Okay, where were we? Okay, one of the things we talked about was the fact that we are over budget, about three months into our, to our year here on, uh, taking down the trees, and this is also wrong here, it's. We, we spent ten thousand five hundred dollars, we're five hundred dollars over budget, but we also have about three thousand dollars more of trees that are gonna be taken down in the next couple of weeks that we already approved, so. Some of them are questioning, how can we agree to cut trees down when we know we are over budget?
So what's the answer?
This Cec, Cecily feels this is a decision for the village board rather than the commission members.
So what's the answer?
The answer is we have to increase the tree, take down budget by about ten thousand dollars, from ten thousand to twenty in reality.
Cause we already informed our budget, we can't increase it, you can move it from line to a.
Okay, no, we can move it from.
Budget's already finalized.
Right, so, so what lines can we move it from?
Somewhere near the park, and you gotta find the money and move it.
Okay. Well, next year, the answer is to increase the tree take down budget.
Well, that's a large, that's a budget process.
Right, it starts in February.
No, it's gonna start in January. It's gonna start.
We don't have meetings every day like you know we. Can we pick out the really sick trees, if we, I mean, I guess we can't pick any less trees to cut down, right, I mean, we can't prioritize or?
We try to do that, that's, that's why the second part of this paragraph says, we have a lot of requests for pruning, which we deny because we know we don't have enough money to do it. And then those trees are not sick, they're just.
The one that you took down yesterday, that was really needed.
Yeah, there's a lot of trees that are dying.
Yeah.
All the ones.
All the ones that are.
We have to take orders, they're immediate danger.
Right.
That's what we have to do.
So what was your question again?
Um, yeah, I, I guess that's true, I, I've gone by them, they always look like they need to be taken down.
I know, and even ones that look good fall down, and there were, that wind, like the one down there, that wasn't a street tree on Montgomery Street, but that tree didn't look dead. The hole inside was hollow.
Yeah.
What else?
Um, so I have some requests here. Most of them are for pruning, as you can see. Want me to read each one?
What we need, which of your recommendations is here?
Okay, for fifty-six Livingston Street, we request that the pruning needs to be done, but bearing in mind the cost, recommends that the village offer a permit for the homeowner to have the trees professional.
No action, no. In the next one, there's no action to be taken.
Right.
What about the next one, what about Hill, right?
Uh, we didn't really look.
Tables and positions.
This came in last, yeah, this came in late.
Marvin, on Main Road Street.
Marvin, we recommend.
No action.
No action because it's out of the right way. Mister Rogers, we recommend that the three branches be pruned because we are taking down trees right next door, that's already been approved at, um, Trager's house. So they're gonna be right there, so they can just swing over while they're up there, and we just prune these ones that are dangerous.
Okay, so now my next question is down here at the bar, it says several trees have not had any action taken, Cecily has been frustrated since she gets called and asked about these trees. My question is, why are people calling Cecily? It's probably the tree that should be calling the village.
Okay.
So.
They know she's the head of the tree commission, so they call her all the time.
So, I mean, are these personal friends, or the average person doesn't know who Cecily is, is the tree commission? I'm trying to figure out where, why this line of communication gets started.
Well, you know, I can ask Cecily why they're calling her, she never really, she, she never told me or complained.
The way it should flow is that if a resident has a concern with a tree, they contact the village.
Right.
All right, and what I'm hoping here is it happening is that they call the highway department, and the highway department's referring them to the tree commission.
I don't think so.
Yeah? So let's just make sure, all right? I mean, the village, everything should be coming to the village, and then the village, you as the liaison, would talk to the tree commission and say, we need you to look at these trees. And then the tree commission would make their recommendation on us, and then you, we contact the property owner, and let the property owner know.
Right.
Cecily shouldn't have to be handled by people.
Right.
I wonder why she wants to resign.
She's been doing it for four years. Wait, if John gets, gets people out of him.
You know, so let's just check into that.
Yeah, I'll ask her why they're calling.
You don't want a volunteer being handled by the public, you know?
No.
All right, now what's the one on Livingston Street, the Mrs.?
Mrs. Mitten?
Is that the one on the corner, if you and I looked at?
Yes, now. Yes, now...
That big sidewalk, you know, right?
Yeah, so... We, we can have somebody...
So, it's not the, it's the, the Bluestone?
Yeah, the Bluestone, yeah.
Well, we talked about it, either that, the Bluestone, the town, you know, when's that come out, that's the only way we can fix it.
We don't wanna go over it?
I was like, we can?
Well, it's been done in a few other places since, since we looked at it. Michael Berg did it.
With that big of a lot of people?
Yeah. If you wanna look at it, I'll show you. But the question is, is the village gonna pay for somebody to do that, that's the question, since it's a village tree.
Well, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Take them like he and I actually do.
Right, or, or us do the work, yeah.
We'll have to look at it, alright?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah?
Any other questions? Just wanna say one other thing, new officers will be elected in December, John Weschler has offered to take over the chairperson position. Cecily's been doing it for four years, I have to thank Cecily, she's been a very hard worker at that, she loves doing it, she loves people calling her up, talking to her about trees.
Well, she's frustrated.
Yeah, okay, and, um, Tess McKellen resigned due to ill health, and we want to thank her for her work on the Commission. And we miss Tess very much on the Commission. And another thing down here, as you see on the bottom, is, is John Weschler, can we talk about this now, the Frost Foundation?
Go ahead.
Okay. John Weschler would like to apply to the Frost Foundation for a, um, a grant to hire a landscape designer for the Legion Park down on Rhode Island. And the idea is to clean up the park along, along the, um, stream, and maybe have a little trail down there, and he's looking to apply for ten thousand dollars to the Frost Foundation, with the village would be the, the applicant. So, we have to talk about this.
Let me see what you got there. Is the idea that we would have volunteers do the work after it was designed?
Yes, 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 just to design and...
So, the design would be the end of the expenses?
Right.
Yeah.
You've seen it, right?
It says here through a member of the Rhineby Village Tree Commission, John Weschler, the village applied last year for a grant to hire a landscape architect. Who did it apply to?
No, he didn't apply. He was, I don't know why he...
I don't remember.
I don't remember applying for a grant.
No.
I think it's wonderful that he wants to do that. Has the Tree Commission...
We did talk.
Deliberated this, or was it just coming from...
No, we deliberated, John, John Weschler and Michael Fraser did a lot of work in the park last year cleaning it out on their own time. And he, he recognizes there's a, um, potential there, John, John, um, went to some archives, as you see on the second page here. It's a nineteen twenty-five sketch of the park, and, and, um, there's a trail alongside the, the, um, stream.
It says such a grant available from the Frost Foundation from the Legion?
Oh, Frost Foundation awarded money to the people in the organization in Rhineby, that's what it was said. That's an embargo Frost.
And the next...
Longtime residents, and when they both pass, that's, the idea of the fund was to benefit Rhineby. I just, I have an issue with the fact that this says through a member of the Rhineby Village Tree Commission, the village applied last year for a grant.
We may have though, I remember talking about it.
No, we didn't, we didn't, not to the Frost Foundation.
You sure?
Positive.
We were talking about the Rockefeller Park and...
Like, we didn't apply for the grant?
No, no, they, they should wanted to do some planting sale, and we couldn't, or, but it wasn't...
So, the, the next time that the Frost Foundation meets us in March, so...
So, we can just correct the letter and then we can do the gap, right?
Yeah.
And just to give you a heads up too, as I had mentioned earlier this year, I renewed our request for help with the Big Belly Project with the Frost Foundation, I sent them that letter back in September. And I spoke with Chris Chesney that, uh, last week, and he said that they're gonna consider that for a two thousand fourteen award. Which you, you know, hopefully, next spring when they meet, we'll, we'll go over on that one. That one's already in front of me.
Yeah, and you applied for that in September two thousand?
Well, that was the first time we requested, and, uh, Chris had called me in the springtime, but, you know, it's there, it'll be me again this fall, if I wanted to reset, go ahead and do it, so I said I had an interest in the gap. And the request was for whatever help they could give us to help expand the Big Belly Program, I said, our build-out plan is for about eight more units. And five of those would go in the downtown area, and one would go at the May Park, one would go at the Rockefeller, the May Park, and one would go at the Legion Park.
Is there any consideration of this project outside of the grant application?
No.
And my suggestion here is, I don't think this is gonna, as it's presented, I don't think this will be, be successful, it was just not enough information, because they're just asking for money, and they don't have a plan, or really have a description of what they're, what this park is.
Should have some kind of speech?
You know, what their money, what, what their money is gonna build to. So, my suggestion would be that you go to John and the Tree Commission, and suggest that they come up with more of a description of what their plan is gonna be, in your words, like Heinz has some type of a scheduling or something, this is what we would like to park. This is our concept, and we wanna hire somebody to help us develop this.
I mean, could there be a committee that was not just the Tree Commission, you know, other members of the community, I mean, that park is kinda the gateway, uh, to the village, and it is in disrepair. It could be very nice, but...
Howard, what would be helpful probably, if you go on, uh, on the website and from the company, if it comes down, a map of the area that you, that you want to, to do, you know, to, to re, uh, develop, and then, and then lay, lay on top of it, what you, what you think you wanna do.
Well, that's why he wants to hire somebody to...
No, 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 I'm just, you should have a piece, a, a, a plan of, of the land, what it looks like now.
Right.
Okay, and then you describe a walkway that it was, you know, you can sort of outline this, you don't have to tell them what kind of plan actually you wanna put in.
Inseparable details.
Yeah, well, I think he's going...
Just a high level, a high level, uh, uh, plan.
Right.
Yeah, before we put money into developing, you know, a plan with one vision, you know, maybe other people would wanna see, you know, other regional opportunities.
It wouldn't hurt to get the American Legion included in this, because the American Legion memorials and all are down there at the bottom of the hill, they definitely need some work there.
Yeah, it's in bad shape, if I pulls that.
I think it's wonderful that he wants to do that, you know?
Okay, I think, I mean, that, that, to me, is a very underutilized resource here in the community, I mean, I use that place a lot, you know, but very few people in this village do it. And, uh, I definitely could, you know, be a much better resource than it is now. And if it was developed and it was more to offer the public, I think it would be used more.
But I was thinking of encouraging, uh, John to, 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 to work that, I think it's nice that he's doing that.
Yeah, I think he's, he's going more by the nineteen twenty-five sketch of the park, where it shows people, uh, enjoying the...
So, it would be helpful. If he, if he found that in, in the library, it would be helpful to show this.
Yeah, with Michael Fraser, looking for that, yeah.
Did I understand that the Tree Commission was not happy with the trimming on the north side of the, did I understand that correctly one time?
North side of what?
Of the bridge there. There was all that high brush, it was, I don't know what it was, but...
No, it wasn't the Tree Commission, it was...
Somebody was unhappy.
Yeah, Meg and my, Meg Crawford and Mike were, I mean, uh, John Weschler.
Okay. I thought it was a vast improvement when they took all that.
Well, no, they, they planted some things, and then they were, they were trimmed down, I guess they were cut down by lawnmower.
Yeah.
They planted them on the edge.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Website, have you got anything? Biometric control?
I have a question on the website. Just, when I was looking at the voucher down, I noticed we spend a fair amount of money on postage from water and sewer departments, I know we kinda talked once about accepting, I know we do take credit cards, but if we were to ever look at a website that could have, you know, bill paperless, like we do with a lot of our, our bills, someone could sign up and have their water bill delivered, you know, be emailed, you pay it with a bank transfer, and we save lots of money over, over the course of time.
Build, build it out, that's quite what I think you're doing, to do that.
I will ask a question.
You know, some kind of billing compatibility was...
Like a doo-doo box, Chesley building.
Yeah, credit card bill comes on your...
Where do you mail it?
I will ask, find out for you. Anything else on the website? Biometric control?
I'm looking to this biometric, uh, time clock, and I went across the, uh, the street, and the town uses these, this mono, uh, biometric finger punching, and all it does is it's a replacement for your, your timesheet. And, um, so Pat and I looked at pricing, and we called, or she contacted three different places, and at Coon, and found out that these are at Sam's for three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So, I'm of the mind that if we, uh, we could just put, start with one, put it here, and have all the folks at work here, you know, use it, and then see, and then give it a test run, and then by the time, and if it works over ninety days, then we can start putting it in the...
Give you a better idea how it works now? Have you touched it, it's near my heart?
Yeah, it's just, uh...
And how does it, how does it then? How does it then, uh, interface as far as your payroll? I mean, is not logging it into a computer system and doing any calculation for it?
I mean, it's calculating, you can say, okay, this is vacation time, street time, or, you know, overtime, but you know how we have the calculation sheet that we use? That the foremen use, and, and when they code, so that would be attached to a printout of that.
So, they would have to take that printout, and then they would supply that to the payroll company?
Right. No, no, not the payroll company, you don't have to go out, this is all through us, so you'd have...
You don't do our payroll? We send it to...
Oh, yeah, no, Pat would, yeah, what I mean is, yeah, when you're done, yes, yes.
So, they're still, they're just gonna take a printout, and then they're gonna have to provide that for payroll arrangements.
All this does is replace the punch card.
A handwritten card, or whatever type of timekeeping system they're using.
Well, I guess we don't use, we don't use the punch card here, we use the punch card in the...
Yeah, we all, we do a, a manual time clock, right?
Here we do, yeah. I imagine only in the...
Highway Department too, right?
No, the Highway Department has a...
They have a, oh, that's right, yeah, they do have a...
All the other departments have a time clock.
So, you're not gonna have a problem with that?
Well, we already put that in the contract, because we've been talking about this for years, so...
Well, when we were talking, when I was talking with you before though, we give one, get this one included here, and then expand to the other departments if it works, but...
And they've had great talk with, they didn't even work over a single one.
But this has to be a report pulled from a computer, so if you're gonna put one in at the Highway Department, it's gonna be very difficult, I think, to get, to pull a report that doesn't use a computer.
I did a little research on, on this.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that...
I know, but then either, there, we can research it a little bit more and see if there's something that has an Intranet or a VPN, connects all of them together.
I saw some of them have, you know, you can have like, uh, thumb drives, so, at the end of the week, you can download it, bring it here, on just a little tiny, uh, drive, and that may have it, I don't know.
Yeah, we have that feature, sure.
Yeah, some of the ones I looked at had that, or you can package your data and email it off, um, but...
That I don't think, but...
Well, we don't have computers at all places.
The only limitation I see with this is you need the USB or Ethernet connection, so it's, it's like a physical Wi-Fi, you know, so, yeah, we would have to have the remote spots, you know, Wi-Fi.
Or you can go and pick it up on a little drive, bring it over.
Or, yeah.
But they have to be able to use a computer to create, to generate their...
Well, they know how, he knows how to use a computer.
But I don't think you need to, you could probably download it right off of the unit, I think, uh, onto the drive, and then bring it back, something you should, would have to look into.
So, what are your proposals, Brad?
Will you start out with one? Yeah, I wanna start out with one, and see how... I'd like to make a motion that we buy one of these at Sam's, uh, for three, it's about four hundred bucks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, one more thing, we have to have our I, IT guy, and, you know, do the wire at Pat's office, or, we could put it in the vestibule maybe, and run the wire right through that closet into her, you know, to connect it to her computer.
Just a little extra time.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that it's, you know, upgradable, so that we can hit all the others, and do they have, uh, I know some of them that I looked at had a, you know, kinda heavy-duty version, so, if you're at the Highway Department or something, you can grease all over it, they're...
They recommend, they recommend, now what this one has is you have fingerprint, and you have backup fingerprint, so you can, if you have an injury, or if you have, you know, too much grease on your hands, or whatever, you, they do recommend that you use a handprint.
Took a shoe off.
They recommend for people work with their hands, if you do a handprint one, which is more money, I don't know if that's a marketing thing, where they're trying to get you to buy the more expensive thing, but they use, I think they use this one at the pool, with, you know, with the kids, so...
Have you, have you, uh, have you talked to, uh, any other municipalities at all, other than across the street?
No.
And all city and kingdom, that way.
I talked to ADP too, I think it was, or, and, uh...
We had Chronos, we had ADP come in here and give us a full-blown poll, set the whole thing up a few years ago.
But you have to use their barrel observation kit.
The office staff, gonna, well, we can't do that, we can't do that.
It's a lot more expensive than these.
All this does is replace the punch card seats, we still have to do that, ADP, we're gonna end up doing the entire payroll and tax reporting and all that stuff.
They won't give you that unit, the biometric unit, unless you sign us, for them, it's a whole package.
Yeah, right, that's why I wanna do this simply, like, someone at the Streets Department could be coded to three different activities in one day, you still have to do that, you still have to have Mike or whatever do that calculation, and then attach this to the, you know what I mean?
Why, why didn't you want to put this, for instance, in the sewer department, where you have...
He's talking about doing a test run, see how it works, instead of going out and buying five or six of them.
Yeah, and he's actually right, buy one of them, and maybe we split the cost between sewer and water?
No, no, you still need one each, yeah, but it's still gonna be...
Otherwise, everybody has to come here to clock in and out.
Yeah, water, I thought you were just getting for a test run, for a test run.
Test run here.
Because I wanna put it here, have the Village Hall employees use it, see how it works, and then decide if we want to put it in multiple locations.
So, I suggest we get started on this. Well, we are, we're on top.
Heinz had a question, where's the money gonna come from?
It's just pretty much ninety dollars.
I know, it's just...
It's gonna be my credit card, I just...
It comes, it comes out of the, uh, Village Wall budget.
Well, it should come out of everybody's budget.
No, we're, we're doing one test run for Village Wall, it comes out of that budget, if we decide we're gonna buy one for the other locations, then it comes out of their budget.
Well, that's why, instead of maybe we should do it in sewer first, and come out of the sewer and water department budget, and do that too, right?
It's gonna be easier for us to put it here, and have the staff here use it, and learn how to use it, and interface it with the timesheets and all of that, okay?
And we get feedback from Pat from these, uh...
And they may decide, you know what, it's not working out. Everyone wants to have to do all the payroll reporting, so they can do a test run with their timekeeper, for payroll purposes.
So, so we can... Not only that, but we could, I mean, we could have a hybrid, we could end up using something, if we, if it's easier to have a network kinda thing for the remote stuff, we could still use this one here.
Maybe put it up to your laser.
At least, at least, let's have a little stuff to get started. Okay? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so... Other divisions, you already covered that, right, Heinz?
Yeah.
Correspondents?
Oh, wait, I'm still on, I still wanna go over the eighteen T thing from last month. Because they do wanna expand on these facilities, eight feet by twelve feet, and if you guys wanted me to go back to Dr. Warren Temple, the only real neighbor that would be affected by the noise for this generator, and he's fine... to Dr. Warren Temple, the only real neighbor that would be affected by the noise for this generator, and he's fine with it. I suggested we approve it subject to their level two sound enclosure, which will get the decibel level down as low as it can go. So they'd be renting an eight by twelve lease space for three hundred and seventy-one dollars, fifty-two cents a month. Split it fifty percent.
Location is to the south of.
Directly south of this smaller and mid-stone shelter back there. So, subject to Rich approving the simple lease amendment that they're.
Have they already run the cable out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
They sure have.
Yeah. They're like a whole one, but out there it is.
They tried to fish.
They tried to hack it.
The existing conduit, but there was a non-eating return, so it wouldn't make the turn and then they had to re, they did another try.
Stop the hole.
They did a move.
Speed bump.
Wanna make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the ATT wireless lease expansion, subject to the site lease amendment being satisfactory to Rich Olson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Any correspondence? Yes? Okay. We had gotten a request quite a while back from a group that, uh, Superhills Under Eleven Soccer Team, that wanna host a bake sale on the sidewalk. The Toronto Town Hall, actually, they can't host it on the sidewalk, they've been informed of that.
Yes.
They wanna be on the front lawn or the town hall adjacent to the sidewalk and have a bake sale during center class. So, they were requesting permission from us because it's located in the village and we said, we can't give you permission to be on the town hall lawn. You need to get approval from the town board. So they have provided us with a approval application from the clerk's office that says that it's okay for them to be there, so I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So. Rhinebeck Farmers Market, October fifteenth. Rhinebeck Farmers Market is requesting putting up their four old banners again this year for the Winter Farmers Market. We got two more weeks over here at the municipal lot and then it'll be available weekend, started in December over at Town Hall. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Private Chamber of Congress, October sixteenth.
There was a banner approval. The second was to reserve the Village Hall.
Okay. Uh, Rhinebeck Farmers Market wants to reserve Village Hall for Wednesday, January twenty-second. We'll check to see if that's a court night, babe. Uh, they wanna have their annual meeting, which they've had in the past up here, six to eight PM, open to the public, includes market vendors, followed by eight PM to nine PM meeting of the Rhinebeck Farmers Market Board. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Chamber of Congress, October sixteenth. To myself and the board, Chamber of Congress is visiting Sunday, December first, is the day they'd like to have the annual tree lighting at the Rhinebeck Savings Bank parking lot. Lighting takes place at approximately five thirty PM, beginning at three PM, various organizations will have tables in the plaza and they'll be offering different activities and goods, General Giants, letting know the leader and the General Giants Four-H Club will be doing wagon rides, weather permitting, and put the truth band in the plane. They're inviting local fire departments, law enforcement, and civic organizations to participate. Parade begins at five, land at Mulberry Street, ending at the bank lot. Thank you for all the villagers does to make this day possible. Police force helps out with this. Matter of a couple of cars, just making sure that traffic is handled properly. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. We had received two letters from the county. I'm sure everybody is aware of this because I did send you guys an email. Well, we were successful with two grant proposals. As everybody's aware, County Executive had last year taken some steps to make some grant funds available. What happened was we took a reduction of eighteen thousand dollars per year in our sales tax revenue, but he took money and put it into a pool that encouraged shared services and consolidation of governance. So we had applied with the town of Rhinebeck for one grant for about seventy-six thousand dollars for what we call a tech grant, and it's gonna be computer upgrades and fiber out the cable, shared server. We're gonna be able to link, network everything in this building, town's gonna be able to do the same on their side. So we were successful and got that grant. And we had also applied with twelve, there was twelve other municipalities that joined us and A.L. Roar from Hyde Park had kinda headed up that one, the other one was the Spintan, had that up. And we got two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars for the, the grant program County Executive Mollinaro set up. And we're gonna be getting new web-based permitting enforcement software for planning and zoning. So when you break this down, we took an eighteen thousand dollar hit in sales tax revenue, but we end up gaining about fifty-five thousand dollars in grant awards.
Between the two of them.
Between the two of them. So, uh, thank you to County Executive and thank you to the legislature and, uh, we're really looking forward to getting these two programs up and running. But I did receive an email yesterday from the county about steps that need to be taken in order for the tech grant to get started and probably we're looking at early next year sometime. Uh, we had received on October twenty-first a resolution from the town of Rhinebeck Board and as regarding the hospital expansion, and basically their resolution was just encouraging the village board and the planning board to make sure that as this plan moves forward, that the maximum number of trees in the grassy area will be maintained when they do this expansion. And it was a unanimous resolution on the part of the board.
Shouldn't they have to try and make these?
Well, you have to. Today, we received something from Young Rhinebeck. Half-day Old World for middle schoolers, lunch and activities, and they want to use this facility, correct? And this is for, and this is for December fifth, from nine thirty until two thirty. What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Is that right, Lisa? I don't have any. Oh, that's that cable franchise thing. I haven't even gotten a chance to look at it.
Well, it's, you know, they define gross revenue being less than what we're getting already and then there's no money for Panda, it's just a it's not a, it's a feeble attempt at giving us a new contract. No surprise there.
So is our contract up?
It could just continually.
It'll go over every year unless it's a contract negotiation.
Yeah.
Well, this one they want fifteen-year.
They define gross revenue being less than what we're getting now.
Basically, you never get any more out of what you currently got. We got probably, from what I've told, the best contract that you're ever could possibly get when you're negotiating, always lose. And anything they give you, grant, charge, and your revenues are more than anything, so.
You got a pool with bigger communities or.
That's what compensates you.
That's the, yeah, that's the thing.
That's good.
So Fox, Opto and Mine wants to come here, then you can.
Phas?
Or Phas.
Horizon, yeah, Horizon Phas.
Yeah.
That, confidence.
Okay, we have a request today from Lisa Biscardi, Acton, Trish Jackalone, and Karen McFarlane. Uh, we are requesting that the Village Hall be closed on Thursday, December twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, and the full-time personnel will use benefit time to compensate for the day off. We are thanking you in advance for the consideration of this matter. So, Christmas is on Wednesday, so you're proposing that we close the Village Hall on Thursday, what about Friday?
Open Friday.
Friday, what can be opened? So they're asking for Village offices to be closed on the twenty-sixth. The Highway, the union people get it by contract, don't they?
No, they have half a day on Christmas Eve.
Half a day on Christmas Eve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we don't do anything on Christmas Eve, it's a full day here?
No, we apply by that too, with half a day.
That's already in place?
Their request is the Village Office to be closed an extra day.
But. If you specify that it's for the use of.
Okay, what time?
Benefit.
Benefit time.
We would, yeah.
Because I don't wanna establish any.
No, it's not, you know, it's our benefit time for that day off.
Whether you be using sick days or.
So closing the.
Vacation day, personal day.
Closing the office is a result of them taking their, their benefit time.
It's because they're proving everybody takes the time off.
They're asking to have Village close, so we can have the day off. We're asking for the office to be closed, that we can have the day off and use our benefit time for that day. It's not asking, it's not asking to close the office and that's it.
Usually, the twenty-sixth, it's not much really moving. Most countries are closed, it's a highway. So I don't see a problem with that.
I just don't wanna, I wanna make sure that it's because we're approving their, their accrued time, not that we're closing the doors because we're giving them the day off. They have it coming anyways. There's no rule against them, but it's just getting together and saying.
They're using benefit time.
But if they all put in time off requests, and they will then.
Right, but they're just asking that the Village Hall be closed because otherwise you have to hire additional people to.
Yeah.
Right.
And you control the days that the Village Hall is open to close.
How, you could be Lisa for a day.
I'll do payroll.
You could be Pat for a day. He, you could be Karen for a day.
I, I think we want to do that.
My only question is, all right, is now we have a situation where what about if our other department people come to us and they want?
Well, that's what they do.
The same request.
Yeah. How come, how come the Village Hall's closed and we're working? That's what they're gonna say.
It's gonna have to start tomorrow.
Really?
Well, the sewer departments, they can't.
Well, these plants, these plants run with nobody there.
Well, we gotta have somebody in the water department.
What's that?
We're gonna have somebody in the water department for twelve hours.
Right, but they can't run that, there's somebody outside.
But not from New, uh, Christmas Eve till the twenty-seventh.
Certainly, they can.
If there's a problem, then somebody's notified.
I don't think ours can. Waste water.
We have, we have second days a week.
What, what precedent does it set? That's what I'm asking. Does it give everybody?
That's it, I, I wanna clarify that we're not setting a precedent because you have to do that or it's a fast practice or whatever fuzzy word is. What do you think, Howard?
I just think the other departments are gonna want the day off too, and they're gonna use their, their time to do it also. They're gonna request it.
Is there a limit on how many people in the Highway Department can be approved off on any given day?
He's not, if they're using vacation days, he's supposed to approve it.
So I'm saying, so if they all ask for a vacation day, you're gonna approve it?
You can.
I don't, I would say no, but they're gonna, they're gonna point to these, if, if the office is closed, I can make a.
Vacation days?
Right.
Can we talk, can we prove this next month or talk, you know?
Yeah.
This is just.
I mean, we wanna do it, we wanna do it, it's just that it doesn't work that way. I mean, we've learned our lessons.
Do we have an executive session planned already?
Right.
Yeah. Is there another person on that?
It's not.
Discussing it right now. You could, you could further discuss this on.
Unless there's like litigation.
Terms of setting a precedent could stipulate just this particular day, it's just a one-time, one-time thing, right?
Yeah, next year.
And the question, and the question remains, well, if Christmas falls on Monday, does that mean we're gonna close on Tuesday? And then next year falls on Tuesday, does that mean we're gonna close on Wednesday, and the next year Thursday, and the next year Friday? You know, that's the question that comes up. So if we say yes to this one, do we honor the request in a different form next year? And if we honor it for these people this year, do we have to honor it for somebody else this year or next year?
Why don't you just adjourn this next month, let me do it.
Okay.
It's not gonna.
Okay. That's your copy?
Yeah.
I have it.
You can keep that one I gave you there.
Any other business? Minutes approved, or water and sewer adjustment.
Okay, we have eighteen, eighteen new owners, half of them are from the gardens, and we have eighteen final bills. The rest of the. The rest of the.
I'm good Thanksgiving.
One item was applied to the wrong account, which has been fixed. One of them we removed charges because it is built prematurely. One, we removed the collection fee, it was a person died. Husband of a person died. And the one removal of the collection fee was because we had media issues and it took a while to resolve them and so, so I dropped the, the collection fee.
Otherwise, it's. I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the adjustments that I stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted.
Right? I've got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven new owners, twenty-five dollar fee, twenty-five dollar adjustment rate. I've got final bills, one, final bill adjustments, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I've got, uh, three adjustments, one, build a closing, the penalty, the penalty because of the death and the, uh, removal charges from build a closing and a five hundred dollar tap fee. And then there's a twenty dollar ninety-three cent, it says normalized, I'm not sure what that is. Twenty dollar ninety-three cent adjustment. Motion. Would like to make a motion to approve those adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Minutes approved. Two to eleven. Additions, omissions, or corrections? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Two to twenty-six. Any additions, omissions, or corrections? Make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. July ninth. Any additions, omissions, or corrections? I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I stayed, I wasn't here.
Okay. So we got four, eight, forty yeses and one abstention, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. July thirtieth. Any additions, omissions, or corrections? I'm going with for the workshop for the fairgrounds, showing you the best code. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. August thirteenth. Any additions, omissions, or corrections? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
I gotta stay for now, I don't think I'll see.
August thirteenth. August thirteenth?
Yep.
Okay, so we got four, you, you were it right?
Yeah.
Four yeses and one extension. August twenty-seventh. Any additions, omissions, or corrections? I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Valuettes are downstairs to be signed, and I believe that's all we have.
Is this something we were supposed to do?
Yeah. Is your, is your app, do you have?
All right, so this is, this is a read, a few of what we've already done. We already had approved some things to close out the year.
Um-
The week last month.
I put your table up last month. I didn't have that in, in minutes.
Yeah, I don't think we did it last month.
No, it's put on the wall there.
All right, so what this is, is that this can close out all of the accounts from calendar year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Any else? Okay, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to go to executive session for personnel matters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. I need a motion to adjourn the executive session, please.
I make a motion to adjourns executive session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. I need a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?